Bob, we're opening up with a public hearing this evening. This is for the cable franchise agreement. We did advertise and we do have a sonographer at least signed on to keep track of this for us. Is that right Peggy? Thumbs up.
Yeah, I confirmed with her this morning, so she should be on.
Bob, I have the ordinance here that I can open up on the shared screen. And you'll see that, you know, just the this whereas right here talks about public, public hearing. So I guess this is needed as part of the cable act. So we did advertise it. I don't know if anyone this evening has any comments or if we need to do anything to introduce it again to the board. We did have a representative from our cable representative, the attorneys, visit us last week and go through the agreement. But this is just the resolution that would formalize the franchise renewal.
This is just a legal formality under the Cable Communications Act that we hold a public hearing with respect to comments or questions that anybody may have concerning the proposed franchise agreement and the ordinance that'll be adopting it. So with that said, does the board have any comments or questions? I know there was a full-blown presentation last month by Joel Winston regarding this, but is there any questions or comments?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
How about any members of the public? Not, not hearing any questions or comments. We have a motion to adjourn the public here.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's move to call, call this meeting in order. Roll call Peggy, please.
Commissioner Genosik.
I'm here.
Commissioner Schreie.
Here.
Commissioner Horwitz.
Here.
Commissioner Roddy.
Here.
All right, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Stands proclamation.
Under oath and the visible liberty just strong.
Sorry about that, the share screen, I couldn't get the flag to connect, so I apologize for that.
Okay, at this time, do we have any public comment? Don't have it.
Correspondence, is that what you asked? I'm sorry, you broke up the. Just a few letters here, you know, we have one, it was an application that was sent to PennDOT's multimodal program. It was a program that was very competitive and we were seeking trail connections. This was sidewalk and trail connections. You know, we'll just keep, we'll, we'll put, continue to, to explore this and other funding sources for the project, but just sharing the, the communication with you. We have a resident letter, any questions on, on the DCNR, or I'm sorry, the PennDOT? This is a letter that was received, Mr. and Mrs. Pollock live in the township on Voice Road, just complaining about or bringing a matter to your attention with regards to use of their driveway for neighboring property. Not quite sure, you know, how we could work on this, you know, Chief Q and I can have a discussion offline. Maybe there's a way to reach out to a listing agent or talk to this resident directly to see if there's something that we can do to help. But it was, it was addressed to the entire board, so I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda. You can feel free to go back and read it at your, your leisure if you have, you don't want to get the details or have any follow-up questions. Commissioner Roddy, you want me to go into any more detail on that letter or are you okay with the?
No, I'm familiar with it. I see, I drive past it every day. I've seen what the residents have put up to block their driveway, which seems hopefully sufficient that people get the message like to not drive on their driveway. But if you could follow up with them and see if there's anything else we could do, that would be great.
Make a note of that, we will. And then I just included for you, this is from Oak Ridge Fire Department, they just sent a monthly report. You know, it's, has some good statistics in there with regards to calls, number of calls, how many responded to those calls and the response time. So it's, it's another report that can stay there on the online portal for you to take a look at later, but wanted to make sure that you got a copy of it. And then lastly, this is some correspondence that the COG put out and together with County Emergency Management, there's some training available, remote training for elected officials regarding NIMS. It's being offered in September and in December. If you'd like to register, you can, you know, let me know, I'll register you guys for it. While it is remote, there are specified times, seven to 10, either September 2nd or December 2nd. So we'll send out a reminder email to you guys if you want to take advantage of that as well. That's all the correspondence that we shared with you this month.
Okay, let's move on to consent calendar items. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank balances for anybody's information. So let's move on to department reports, building, we're building permit reports.
Yeah. Building, again, we're staying, you know, quite busy, number of single-family types of home improvement projects, whether they be decks, pools, patios, those things, building permits coming in for charter. We had some discussion about that offline and we can brief the board with that as we get into the meeting. But the volume is there. If we look at the revenues for the month, I think we were just about 25,000 in revenues, 24,200 compared to our year-to-date of last year, and we're right in line with it. So initially I was thinking we might not hit our budget number, but it appears as if with the, the volume that we're seeing and especially with the other, the builders that are likely to come in for permits, I think we'll, we'll hit our budget. So an active month. Any questions on any of the permits?
No, looks good. Let's move on to communications and community development report.
Yeah, Andrea, I'll let you drive this one.
Thanks, good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone. I'd like to mention a few highlights from the report. I've been working on a magazine readership survey, developing that in-house and will be implementing it in-house. I plan to have it online and also in print so that people can mail a paper version back to us as well. And this will give us some data on readership that's important for us to know what we might need to enhance and also to support any advertising efforts. And we can look for that hopefully in the fall edition, which is going to be late October. As I'm sure you'll hear about in the Parks and Rec report, Parks and Rec has launched numerous virtual and at-home type programs. So I've been working with that department to get that launched and promoted on the website and social media. And one component of that is coordinating and transferring sponsorships to these new virtual programs. And we've had great response from the sponsors thus far who are willing to, you know, shift to these other programs and they're still getting their usual great benefits and advertising and so forth as a thank you for being a sponsor. So that's been really nice for the business community. And of note for community development is Takeout Bingo, which Parks and Rec launched, which has been a nice way to promote Takeout from our South Fayette restaurants. And we've gotten some nice response from the community and the restaurants on that On the website, I'm looking to begin development of our mobile app for our website. It would be a true app that would make it really easy to use, the most common features on a smartphone. And we budgeted for that last year for this year. And it looks like we're actually going to come in about 3,000 or 3,500 less than expected just because we are starting the process later in the year because of COVID. And on the last page, John, I wanted to let everyone know how our glass recycling collection went. This was the bin that the Pennsylvania Resources Council brought and they left for about a week in the municipal parking lot. We were able to advertise it in the summer magazine and we got amazing response. We collected more than 11 tons of glass and the estimated household attendance was about 650. This was about four times more than the response we got from the daily pop-up recycling events in 2019. And compared to other communities that have done it so far this year, we've done really well. PRC was able to get a partial reduction in the cost thanks to a sponsorship that they got. And if we're interested in doing another one this year, we could have one in November and look at getting not only a PRC sponsorship money, but also perhaps some local sponsorship money from some of our businesses who might be interested in, instead of sponsoring an event in a recreation sense, sponsoring glass recycling. So if that's something we're interested in doing, I can get that on the calendar and make sure that that gets promoted in the fall magazine.
Yeah, I think they're really well-tended, good, you know, great to get some clean glass recycled. So if we can get a sponsorship for it, I think that's a, that's a home run.
I do too. And I'm excited about the app too. Looking forward to that.
Great.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Part of the recreations report.
Hey Paula, are you with us this evening? Thought I saw you out there.
Yes, I am.
Hi there.
Okay, do you want to go ahead, John?
No, 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 I'll defer to you. I just wasn't sure if your volume was working.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. So the past month, we've kind of did a lot of at-home activities and virtual, they had a great response. I was very excited about that. We were able to offer two types of virtual programs through Mad Science. One was a virtual Mad Science TV, which kids could sign on at any time, and they had five different YouTube videos that they could participate in. And then there was the Zoom Lab, which was a scheduled date where they all logged in and had a teacher.
You're breaking up a little bit.
So that was a good turnout, we're actually going to do two more of those in the next coming month.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Paula, I appreciate you putting the report together. You were breaking up a little bit, I'll go through it.
Can you hear me?
Yep, can you hear me? All right. So a lot of virtual programming and do it, do it, stay-at-home stuff. And the other thing was a get-out activity, challenging people to take advantage of parks, whether it be adult challenges of, you know, walk through Fairview or take a bike ride through one of the other parks. There were other, each, each group of the family were to participate in that. So I thought that was a good way to try to encourage people to get outside. I know another program Paul's excited about is Girls on the Run, which is, I think, I think it's at least regional, if not national, but it's something that we think we can do virtually and it's geared towards teenage girls and young girls to get them in, interested in distance running and some cross-country type of events. So I know she's looking forward to that as well. Any questions from the board on any of, any of the Parks and Rec material or programming that was held or is being advertised currently?
What's the, what's the participation rate been for these virtual events?
Hopefully I have enough service to get through, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, they've been, they've blown beyond what my expectations were. We've had, I think, over 75 people participate in the Get Outdoors Challenge, the Scavenger Hunt, we've had over 50 for the virtual kid programs. I think we had 25 registered for the Zoom meeting and about 15 for the Mad Science TV. We sold over 50 camp in the boxes and we're doing a second round of it. So I think people are looking for these virtual activities. So definitely getting more creative and I'm going to be offering more in the next couple months.
Yeah, what we can do in the future too is the programs that get run through the website, we can get you some data, you know, I know you want to see the number of registrants and those types of things, so we can kick that out to you guys so you can have a sense of, of volume.
So is the way you approach this going to change once school starts?
What do you, what do you mean?
Or, well, just like, like the camp in the box and things like that, are they geared more towards maybe the younger children, like three, four, five years old that don't start back to school? Because I would guess that once school starts back, interest would diminish in some of these activities?
Yeah, I think I've been trying to kind of hit all age groups. You know, the camp in the box was younger, the mad science was younger. For the challenges, we had a family version and adult version. Then moving forward, I'm looking at some virtual murder mysteries for maybe like teenagers, then bingo for senior citizens. So I'm really trying to hit all the age groups.
Great, thank you, that's awesome.
Yep.
Thanks Paula.
Good job. Great. Let's move on to police report.
Yeah, sure. The department continues to use extreme caution when it comes to COVID. We are cleaning the office and the cars continually. We're continuing to take temperatures as officers begin their shifts. We've had no issues as far as that goes as of yet, but everything's going good with that. Lexipol for our revamping of our policy. Lieutenant Lineiger and myself have met basically once a week with Lexipol officials. We're about 50 policies into the, the policy manual, so we're moving along. I wish it was going a little bit faster, but it takes time. So we're, we're going to start pushing those out to the department members and John here once in the next two weeks, I would say, to start reviewing the, the new policies. Our body cameras, all the equipment and everything has come in. We are having the new server put in on October 12th. And all officers will be trained on it on October 13th and 14th and we'll be getting to wear those by the end of October. The grant money has been submitted for 50% reimbursement, so we should hopefully get that, I think it's $19,000 back by the end of the year, calendar year. I have more or less a question, does anybody here know if Walnut Ridge Housing Plan has a HOA?
They do.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, I was hoping that maybe the township, or if you want me to, I can reach out, but I thought maybe it would be better coming from the township. We've had, I've had several officers come back to me when they respond to emergency calls down there. The numeration on the homes are all out of order and a few of the calls that we've had, it's taken an extended period of time for our response time. They were hoping that when you go down onto Walnut Ridge Drive, you come to the first stop sign, if the HOA would be, sign saying house numbers to the left and the house numbers to the right.
Okay.
A lot of order and the officers are having difficulty finding the houses in a timely manner. So I was just wondering if that's something you would want me to do or if it would be something that the township should reach out to, to see if they would be willing to put up that sign.
Yeah. Chief, I appreciate that. You know, I think that we can make an inquiry there. We, you know, through some of the closeout of that project, we've had some correspondence with the HOA and various home members. So I think, let us, let us explore that a little bit and we'll certainly communicate with you so we can get it signed properly for your guys.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll run with it.
We actually had a, last year was a home invasion type call and it took way too long for our officers to get there because they couldn't find the house, the house numbers were all, like I said, mixed up. So just for public safety, I think it would be, we need to reach out to them.
Okay, yeah, thanks for letting us know.
That's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks John.
Thanks John.
Let's go to public works report.
Yeah, Butch, are you out there? I wasn't sure if I saw you before.
I'm out here.
All right.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, we're continuing to sanitize all the playgrounds, the pavilions, the bleachers, the dugouts, also municipal building, the library and the police station. We're continuing to do that. With the paving going on now, we're kind of handling a little, few more complaints from the residents and we're going and spending a lot of time talking to them. We're also taking on now the rebuilding the inlets to try to save some money. We're, right now we're in the Lakemont area. We inspected and we have 26 inlets there that we have to rebuild before the pavers get there. So we're taking on all that, plus we're still backfilling behind the curbs and tying in the driveways of the areas that have already been paved by the pavers. It's something that we need to do to keep things going and.
Yeah, no, that's really appreciated Butch. And just for, for the board's information, one of the reasons why we've asked Public Works to do that is, you know, you recall we have a really large road program this year and we want to pave as many roads as we can. So in talking with the contractor and with our staff here, as Butch described, that kind of inlet work or the, you know, some of the base repair or a transition repair at the driveways are things that can really just let the contractor pave and get a lot more done. So that's one of the reasons why we've asked them to do that. So thank you for reminding us of that Butch.
Were you going to be able to finish up all the roads this year or is this going to take longer than expected?
Those were crossfingers.
Yes, I know, I, I was laughing at that.
Hey, my neighborhood got done today, so they're moving.
I would hope it'd be closer than 18 and 19.
Yeah, they're, they're moving, they, they got my whole neighborhood done in two days, so I think they're moving right along.
I would say we're probably about 35% done right now.
That's good. Yeah, But I have one question for you. At the beginning of July, there was a mention of concrete block removal from Star City. Why was that?
Pardon?
Why, why were those concrete blocks taken out?
Actually, they were ours that we had purchased before when we tore down the building. We were under the understanding that we were going to get them back and we removed them.
We used that area for storage. And then we got a lot of the items out of there at time of sale, but those were, those were larger items, we couldn't get to them. That's, that's why it lingered into, you know, past their, the sale date, so to speak.
The only reason I noticed is because my office is on the other side and I'm noticing an uptick now of people trying to cut through there. If they're coming down Hickory Grade Road or up Hickory Grade Road, they're trying to access that, it is like a bypass because there's been so much traffic backing up on Hickory Grade Road. Like Dunkin' Donuts has now created two lanes for a drive-through, which is creating issues. It's just, and so when those barriers were up, nobody could cut through there and everybody just had to follow the natural progression of traffic and those are gone now. I think that since then, Mr. Skell has put up some other construction barriers. I was just curious as to why they were removed, but understood, thank you. All right, well, if there's nothing else for the report, let's move to old unfinished business. Item A, discuss and consider a sidewalk waiver request for BPM Land and Associates.
You might recall last month, there was some discussion of this. I did reach out to Mr. Matusik, I believe he's on the call, I thought I saw him previously. Let me see if I can maybe help unmute him. Because it does feel like, I see Brian, oh, there we go.
Yeah, I'm here John.
Hey Brian, how you doing?
Doing well.
Well, let's defer to the board. Commissioner Roddy, how do you want to begin this discussion?
Does anybody have any comments or questions, follow-up from last month's meeting, I guess would be the way to start.
Okay.
Is that, is that open for public or just the commissioners?
Let's start with commissioners and then, and then if public wants to speak, then we can open it up to public.
You got it, thank you.
I want to speak up a little bit. I was up there looking around the areas and I noticed there's a few properties. The scheme of the sidewalk was to basically connect one end of Old School Road up to the high school. And there's a lot of property in between there that's not going to be, let's say, there's not going to be a sidewalk on it until it's sold. So with that, plus I said last meeting that it's unsafe. I, that's my two, two points of talk on this, so.
I agree with you Keith, I agree that it's just not a safe place to even put a sidewalk to promote people to even walk that road.
So at this point, are we ready to make a motion or do we need?
I'll make a motion to waive sidewalks.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm in now. Did you get that?
We got it.
I think, was that Lisa?
Yes.
Great, we'll let the record reflect your here.
Then let's move on to business. Item A, discuss and consider a tax refund of penalty for resident of 3055 Old Oak Hill
We, this is a communication that came into the township. The resident claims that they did not get a tax bill in 2019, so this is not for 2020 taxes, but for 2019. And the request is for the penalty of $91.15 to be refunded.
I'd make a motion to refund that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item B, discuss and consider Resolution 2020-12, approving the volunteer fire tax credits.
I'm abstaining from that though.
We provide you with the resolution.
Hold on, slow down, let John.
I'm sorry, if you want to just vote for it.
Go ahead John.
Yeah, so this is, you know, follow-up to the 2018 resolution that you guys set forward. I think we have a list of the, the officers or the firefighters that took advantage of it. And one thing maybe just to point out, we are being flexible with the accepting of the application. So we have a list here tonight that you're accepting, but we imagine that there'll be some additional ones that come in before the end of the year. And when they do, we'll accumulate them and bring them forward to you guys for approval at that point. But tonight, we're just looking for a resolution that approves the tax credits for the volunteers listed on this, this list here.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to consider Resolution 2020?
I'll make that a motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, discuss and consider adopting Resolution 2020-13, authorizing the township manager to complete and submit a care as reimbursable expenditure form and to execute a coronavirus relief fund recipient agreement with the county of Allegheny.
Great, just a little background here, I'm not sure if you guys have followed, you know, how this, the federal stimulus money came to the, the county. know, how this, the federal stimulus money came to the county. They have been tasked with dispersing it to municipalities. And the program that they've adopted is, they're called the CARES Act. I'm sure that's an acronym that I might not know the, the standing, what it stands for. But basically reimburses for COVID-related expenses. They have set up a formula based on population for a maximum amount to be reimbursed based upon South AS population, eligible for up to 150,000. And eligible expenses, largest item would be reimbursed for all full-time police officers, personnel or wages or personnel costs from March 1st through October 31st. So we'll clearly hit that, that number without having to look for other reimbursables. So the resolution tonight would just force, or has the township agreed to participate in the CARES Act program through the county.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the township manager to complete and submit?
I'll make that motion to complete it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Gwen, I have one question with that CARES Act. Right, with, with the Corona going on, a lot of the volunteer fire companies have lost a lot of rentals in their departments. Is there anything out there that would help kind of make up some of that money?
Wasn't, wasn't the state doing something on that side?
Well, it was actually meant for, yeah, I know. I, I looked into that and a lot, a lot of it, they require that it was used for Corona, not for, I should say, for items that you bought or things like that, not for the loss of, loss of that revenue.
I saw something where it did cover loss of revenue where if you can show that the previous year you did fundraising and all of those, like, like say like you hosted annual bingo and a down cash and those things, if you can show revenues you had last year and you weren't able to do them because they happen at the same time every year, there is something out there where you can get reimbursed for those losses. But it had to have been something that was either on schedule that had to be canceled because of the virus or it was something that couldn't happen because it was an annual event or something like that and was shut down because of the virus.
All right. Well, I'll give you a call tomorrow about that. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Let's move on to item E, or let's, item D, rather. Discuss and consider resolution 2020-14, multimodal transportation fund grant.
Great. This multimodal fund, the township is exploring to fund two signals, Presto Seagan with Miller's Run and with Newbury Highlands. This just is simply the, the grant application. That program's been extended till the end of September. So this is just a concurrent resolution authorizing us to submit an application to the multimodal fund for those projects.
Okay. Is there a motion to consider resolution 2020-14, multimodal transportation fund? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item E, discuss and consider a motion to approve the settlement of the county, of the country-meadow tax appeal filed by the South AS School District for assessment as follows. 2017, $7,000, $7,080, $80,100, no change. And then 2018 to 2020, $7,330,100, increase of $280,000 each year.
Bob, I'm going to ask you to introduce that.
Sure. This involves actually an appeal filed by the South AS School District in 2017 as a result of the sale of this facility, which I think everybody's familiar with on Washington Pike. I think it's now known by the Bridgeville Rehabilitation and Care Center. There's 182 beds in this facility. A hundred of them are skilled care. School District, through the four years it's been in litigation, we learned that the sales price, which was actually in excess of $11 million, included furniture, fixtures and equipment and goodwill and was done that way for financing purposes. So the school district engaged in appraisal of the property and so did the property owner. And the proposed settlement is actually based upon the, the two appraisals that were obtained and there was very little differentiation in the appraisal, the appraisals. The good part of it is there is this increase of near only, of close to $300,000 from 2018 to 2020. And there will be no refunds associated with this as well.
Okay. Can we put conditions on the settlement? I'm not sure I under, I understand this. Sorry. No, that's okay. Go ahead. It looks like it was just a reass, it was an assessment appeal based off of the school district getting an appraisal because at the time, I guess, Country Meadows, Bob, if I'm explaining it right, at the time, Country Meadows was built and done, the prices increased. And so the school district wants their fair share based on current prices versus what Country Meadows was formally assessed at?
Little bit different than that. The property was actually sold in 2017.
Right.
For $11 million.
Is that true?
Okay. And that's what triggered the school district to appeal it. But then during the course of the litigation, we learned that the $11 million not only included the real estate, but also included furniture, fixtures, equipment and goodwill. And this, they had to do it this way for financing reasons. But everybody did their due diligence by obtaining appraisals. And the appraisals are very close to each other and based upon the proposed settlement numbers as well.
That was all for the nursing center, correct? Up on top of the hill?
I follow all that, Bob, but what exactly is it that we need to be approving?
We, we need to approve the settlement because it's in litigation on a tax, tax assessment appeal. And whenever I see numbers like this, if it's not your typical residential appeal, when I see numbers with seven figures, I think it's an all abundance of caution to bring it in front of the board, make sure the board understands it because there is tax money involved in here. Thankfully, we're getting more money and we're not refunding in this situation.
I understand.
Well, I'd make that motion.
Well, hold on. I want a condition approval, Joe.
Sorry, my bad.
I want a condition that.
Forgot about that question.
That they understand they're not Bridgeville, they're not Bridgeville, they're South AS.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe we should, we should cite them under that ordinance we adopted too.
Yeah, what? We should. Actually, absolutely, we should.
Well, I'm going to tell them.
We'll get to 11 million someday.
Okay. All right. Is there, is there a motion then?
Is anybody talking?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item F, discuss and consider ordinance 2020-7, approving the entry into a franchise agreement with Comcast of Pennsylvania Incorporated for cable television and related services in the township.
Yeah, as we discussed, though, go ahead, Joe.
Yep. I'll make the motion to approve that ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item G, discuss and consider ordinance 2020-08, amending chapter 43 of the South AS Township Code.
This, we talked about this last time, right? With the responsibilities. I'd make the motion to change the ordinance of chapter, amend chapter 43. Sorry.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item H, discuss and consider ordinance 2020-09, accepting the roads in Walnut Ridge.
Has all the work been completed and everything's where we're supposed to be with the roads before we accept them? Anybody?
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead, Andy. I'm sorry.
They, they have completed all the work. We've been working on punch list items since, I'm going to say about March. The only thing they really are still waiting for, and that's held up by COVID, is the Conservation District to give them their final release on the pond. But I can tell you from my point of view, it looks fine. They've got vegetation growing in the bottom. I think they're going to get the, the green light from the Conservation District.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the roads in Walnut Ridge?
I'll make that motion to accept the roads in Walnut Ridge.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item I, discuss and consider a reduction to the letter of credit for Walnut Ridge.
That just goes hand in hand with the roads, right?
Yeah, same thing. This goes hand in hand with, with completion of the roads and all these former issues.
All right. Then is there a motion to approve a reduction to the letter of credit for Walnut Ridge?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item, motion passes. Item J, discuss and consider a recommendation to pay traffic systems and services 22,275 for work performed at Route 50 and Alpine Road.
This is a pay request. This, this project is, is funded through grant program. The, the equipment's on order. If you look in my report, I gave you some of the details of that and some of the other transportation projects. We are on target to have this finished this calendar year, knock on wood. But we don't have a firm date yet from the supplier. So this is a first payment for the preliminary work that was done.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to pay traffic systems and services?
I make that motion to pay traffic systems.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K, discuss and consider accepting proposal from Gateway Engineers for Washington Pike and Boyce Road HOP and signal design for an amount not to exceed $47,000.
Just a brief introduction there. You guys probably recall the multimodal fund grant that was awarded to the township that we had reallocated to this intersection. So the, while there's still some things that need to get worked out, we do have the need to have the project designed. So Gateway has given us a proposal for what that design would cost. Wanted to make sure we brought it in front of you to make sure you were comfortable with proceeding with the design for this project right now.
So what kind of motion will we need here?
An approval to pay Gateway Engineers an amount not to exceed $47,000 for Washington Pike and Boyce Road.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item L, discuss and consider partial payment number one for Young Blood Paving Incorporated in the amount of $640,037.78.
First payment for the paving project.
I make that motion. We pay Young Blood for the paving amount.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item, discuss and consider a motion to enter into a consultative agreement for fiscal operations from Susan G. Hockenberry Coaching and Consulting.
I'll do a little introduction for you there. Made the board aware of our ongoing effort to find a finance director slash assistant manager. Some of you were involved with the search process. After going through that first round of interviews, kind of leaves us without candidates. And we're in a position where we thought seeking some consultative help might be a bridge to help us with our urgent needs as well as kind of prepare for the staffing that would go with this eventually. So Susan, I think you are aware of her background working with Local Government Academy, also with the Quaker Valley Council Governments, really good at municipal finance. Here's a list of some of the projects that she would take on for us. Part of it includes board reporting and getting us set up for 2021 capital and operating budgets. We have some, some larger things to take care of with regards to our accounting software and exploring a more efficient system. So she would help us analyze that and put something in place that just sets us up for, for success. So it's a, about 10 hours a week is what we were thinking. And the agreement that we spelled out here is for a six month, a time period not to exceed six months.
Okay. Is there an emotion, is there a motion to enter into an agreement with Susan Hockenberry Coaching and Consulting? I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
One question is where, like you said, we didn't have any money that we felt was, was okay. Where do we, where do we go from here then? Do we put that back out there?
Becky, I think, you know, let's, let's get through budget season. Let's, you know, get through some of these other financial projects we wanted to take on in the remainder of this year. And then really start looking at, at staffing from a more global perspective and then work with you guys to get another ad out, whether it be for a similar or slightly different position. But I, I would see that happening, you know, early in the year is probably the way I would approach it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. At this time, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing as we don't have any public comment this evening, let's move to board discussion.
We have a discussion item that we're putting in front of you. This is informational. Chiefs of Oak Ridge and Sturgeon Volunteer Fire Department present, provide, reached out to me, provided me with a PowerPoint that kind of summarizes their efforts in pursuing a merger of the departments. And this is just to keep you guys up to speed or to make you informed of it. I know some of you are probably aware of it. So I don't believe we have representatives from other department with us this evening. You know, I myself am by no means an expert on fire service, but having talked with them a little bit and having read through what they, what they presented us with, really what it boils down to is they're seeking to merge two departments into one department that would operate out of both stations, right? So they would consolidate their organizational structure work under, you know, a standard operating procedures that are the same amongst both of them, fundraise under one, but retain both their departments. And so they provided, I think, the other two fire departments with this same presentation. I'm not sure how that progressed or how that went over. But for you guys tonight, what they laid out or some, some of the, the arguments for this, right? Like why are, why are departments looking to merge or consolidate? They do point out that the professional fire study that was done by DCD does allude to the fact that, that we should pursue that. They talk about the demand for volunteers and the availability of volunteers going down, increased training for police, for firefighters, the amount of equipment and, and cost of equipment. So this is a process that will take some time. And I think why they're sharing it with the board is to get everyone's temperature in terms of, you know, is this a direction we want to head in? And what are the, you know, kind of milestones or what, how can, how can we provide them with some assistance or some feedback on, on the path that they're going down? Last we spoke about this was probably right after we had the report back from the Commonwealth. So I know that there's, you know, probably a lot of different discussions that have to happen along with this project. But this is a first step and I think it's being shared with you guys to make you aware and to see if you have any questions, issues, concerns, any of the above.
Yeah, I think they need to reach out to the other chiefs to talk to them all. I, I feel that they all need to get together on this. As far as the study, what exactly did Nixahida recommend? Did he recommend, you know, a, a merge in such a way where you still have two remaining departments? Or was he more on the lines of condensing down to one? So I think there's a lot of.
It was neither. What he, he recommended, Nixahida recommended that we still keep the four stations operational and running, but we take the administrative part of everything and put that under one umbrella that oversees all four departments was his.
Right. I mean, to me, that would be better than combining into one. Like I said, it, it goes back to the other two chiefs in the, in the department of South AS that I think they all should be on a board with this. And I don't believe they have been. The other two chiefs. other two chiefs. I really think it should be open discussion with them and laid out for them, basically. And I'd like to see that done.
I agree with that. I guess my question to you is, when this was shared with me, they indicated that this was, this presentation was given in front of all departments. Am I, am I not correct in that, Keith, or?
I, you know what, as even as a commissioner, I didn't know anything about it. To be honest. So if it was out to the other chiefs, then I can't speak for them.
Okay. I did pull this slide here that these recommendations that they're listing in this slide were taken from that DCD study. So you see that first one does talk about, you know, functional consolidation. But, you know, the study does indicate here that they, you know, there should be some consideration of those two becoming a single department.
There was a lot of discussion on things, but it was never sat down and actually hashed out.
Okay.
And I think that needs to happen.
Okay. I mean, I disagree with that. I think, you know, more discussion is definitely needed, especially over something as significant as this. So, you know, we can work towards scheduling something like that, either as a group or amongst a subset of, of board members, or whatever you want to do. I think, you know, this is probably an olive branch of some kind to start the discussion. So let's, let's do that and let's, you know...
I think, John, not, not to cut you off, but I think it should start with the, the four chiefs and start from there. And then once they get together and they have some type of, you know, this is what we're gonna lead into, then I think it should be brought to you and the rest of the board. But I think it needs to start with, with the communication with the four chiefs.
Okay.
Hey, Keith, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Does their, does their consolidation, how does their consolidation of those two departments affect the other two? Does it affect?
It doesn't affect, no, it doesn't affect the other two. No. I mean, I think it's great what they're doing.
Curious if there was an impact.
No. I mean, in, in all seriousness, I'm sure people aren't gonna like this, but, you know, if we could all get together as all four departments, it would be a greater impact and a better consolidation effort into doing all this. Because legally, when you get into doing all the, the legal stuff in there, that costs a lot of money. It's not cheap to have legal fees and documentation and everything like that. And, and, you know, there were things that were said, brought up in other meetings with the four departments, but there was never anyone sitting down and just hashing it out together. And I think that needs to happen.
I agree. I mean, we can make that recommendation, but I agree with you. I think that we need to allow the fire departments to work that out.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Any other board discussion? Seeing as there's none, let's move on to managers' report.
Yeah, thank you. Couple things too. We discussed a lot of the things that went into my written report to everybody. I did pull it up here on the screen. But one of the things that we didn't talk about tonight that I wanted to make sure at least got on your radar is the building, the municipal complex project. Just this week or in the last, last day or two here, the architects reached out to us with a kind of a written summary of what was presented to us previously or the process that was started. And they started by sending us a draft mission statement with some core values that they're calling them. And if you have a chance, I think, you know, reading through them just to make sure that you're on the same page is a, is a good thing. They also provided us with a document that is a programming document to try to give us an idea of, based upon their interactions with the board and with staff, what types of spaces are needed, what are, what are some rough square footage for those types of spaces? And then what does that get us to from a total perspective? So this document that I'm showing you does some of that. They haven't given us anything conceptual, but this lays out, you know, things that we discussed, like, you know, public spaces in an entrance way, roughly how many square feet do we assign to that, you know, a large public meeting room, how much square footage would go with that. The takeaway here was at the end of it, they have showed us, based upon their preliminary discussions, that the total, I'm just gonna show you the total building at the end here, gets to be 26,344. Obviously, that's an estimate, but that would include the police and the admin side. So that's, you know, about in line with what we were thinking previously. I think that the next step would be to share this document with the board, to let you go through those different proposed uses, both on the public space side, the admin side and the police side, see if there's other things that you could think of that we might want to add and get your comfort level with that size of building. Their next step would be to come, come back to us, go through these documents and maybe show us some concepts that can get us to start thinking about what the building in the physical space might first look like. So I want to make sure, and some of the things, just to, you know, lead to the discussion a little bit, is we had, we reviewed this as a staff and they, so they have spaces for all employees here. And then they also talk about these hotel stations or stations that could be used by an intern or workstations or those, those types of flexible spaces. And then there was the idea of, should we have some, we wouldn't necessarily build it out, but should we have space that could accommodate additional offices should, should staff grow? And so those, that's the kind of forward thinking that we want to put into this. I know we've thought about that a lot on the police side, but really our goal is to, you know, have this building kind of appropriately sized to absorb that growth, both on the police and on the admin side. So I want to make sure I pointed that out. Any questions on that?
No, looking forward to it.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing maybe I'll share with you is to roll through some of the other transportation updates that we had spoken about. So tonight, we, you know, paid an invoice for 50 and Alpine. If you look at the report, we kind of detail the work that was done out there, if you're curious. Other things that are on the horizon here are 50 and Hickory Grade Road, the widening of that roadway. Gateway had done some preliminary work for the township a few years ago. And the good news is a lot of that CAD work has already been completed. So next steps are integrating the design file from Burns and Scale's Piazza project with Gateway's previous designs, get those to jive up and have a design that we can then start pursuing. So we already, because a lot of that work was done, the work that Gateway has to do to complete it is fairly minor. So I went ahead and authorized that, just to make you guys aware that that work is forthcoming. The Newberry Signals, you know, we submitted applications for funding tonight. And then just lastly, oh, I'm sorry, you know, Washington Pike and Voice, you guys also approved that. So that design's coming forward. But the holdup there, you guys might or should know, this, the other part of this funding, so we have grant funding for this, and then the other source of, of funding to build this would come from Charter Homes and their alternative transportation plan. Given the size of the project, they're obligated to make offsite improvements. And Township is, has identified this project as an appropriate one, just in terms of proximity and need and to really have an impact. We're getting a little bit of pushback there because one of the things that, that PennDOT is at least asking is just concurrence with neighboring communities. And there's been some talk amongst our neighbors in Bridgeville that a project closer to their, their border would be preferred. So I don't believe they have the, they don't hold the cards on this, but they have made that position known and it's just slowed the, the process a little bit. Yeah, that's all I have for you guys this evening, unless there's questions.
No questions. Solicitors' report?
I just have one matter, a real estate matter for executive session this evening. It'll be quick.
Okay. Additional executive session items?
I have called an executive session, one for contract negotiations, bargaining with police, the real estate item that Bob had mentioned. And really, that's it. I mean, if there's other personnel items that I thought of bringing, they would have been related to the consultant agreement and our, our search for, for assistant manager. But I think I've reported everything I need to there.
Okay, so we, we can adjourn not to return.
I'd make that motion.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
See you in a minute.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.